Good evening. This is the July 20th, 2022 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. This is our first meeting of the 2022-2023 school year, and it is our first meeting in the Oyster River Middle School Resital Hall, which will be our home for most of our meetings for the upcoming year. Our first item of business is the approval of the agenda. I would like to just note that we will not be taking up the under discussion and action item, the school camera access by law enforcement during a crisis. Under that section, we will treat that as a non-public item at the end of the meeting. So with that, Brian?
Motion to approve as amended.
We have a motion from Brian, a second from Denise. All those in favor? Six in favor, the agenda is approved. Public comment? There are no public comments this evening. Since this is our first meeting in the concert hall here, in case anybody shows up in the next 10 minutes that went to the high school first, we'll indulge them.
I just want to be the first person to make a public comment.
We have one person for a public comment tonight.
Amy Sterndale, Durham. I'm really just here to say that I don't know. I'm here if you need me for, there's an item on the agenda later. I don't know if you need me for that, but I'm just saying I'm available for it. I don't have any comment to make at this time, and maybe it's not appropriate and you have what you need. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item is the approval of the minutes from June 15th. Denise?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 15th.
We have a motion from Denise and a second from Brian. Any corrections or additions?
Yes.
Denise?
Two. On page one, under the video and superintendent about the DEIJ position where it says, maybe I ought to put the mic closer to me. There we go. It says that because his written announcements and communications introducing her as a new hire were not acceptable, I'd like to, instead of saying not acceptable, it's really not sufficient to answer community member questions. And then my other one is under page five, under fall enrollment, under my comment. I'd like to, let me find it. Sorry, excuse me a sec. Page four, page five. Okay. It says she continues to advocate for all kindergarten classes to be in one building. I'd like it to say continue to raise the possibility of all classes of one grade being in one building. And then, yeah, that was it. Those were the only two.
Other corrections? With those additions, all those in favor of approving the June 15th minutes? We have five in favor, opposed, and I will abstain. So the vote is five, zero, one, with me abstaining, and the minutes are approved. Are there announcements, commendations, and comments from the district? Principal Noe?
Good evening. Rebecca Noe, principal of the high school. I just wanted to kind of give an update on some of the things we've been doing this summer. We have a bunch of our different teachers coming in for professional development. So world language, different levels of math, English, social studies, US history, and world cultures have met. So teachers have been in and out of the building and just very busy, and so there's an update for that. A lot of construction is actually going on. We're enlarging the nurses suite, and so it's moving into a kind of the old conference room that we were using, and the conference room is moving into the NPR. And so that's moving along very well and should be open by the beginning of school. And just a reminder on some dates for August. So August 17th, we have Counseling 101 for kids to come in and learn about the counseling department and everything that they have for them. On the 18th, August 18th during the day, we have the Application 101, which is for job applications or college applications, and that's for any high school student. And that evening on the 18th, we have our introduction to high school for parents, and it's the first time that we're doing that. And that's kind of a mixture of counseling and the administration team. And just any questions parents have, it's really more of a dialogue we'd like to have with them and introducing them to any questions they may have about the high school. And then August 25th is our freshman orientation from 8:30 to noon. We will be sending an email out later this week to parents just to remind them of all those dates and make sure they know them. And the sign out in front of the school will be changing finally, too. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And announcements, commendations, and comments from the board? None? All right. And that will just move straight into district reports. So are you covering both?
Yes, I'll be covering both. So the REACH program has gone off very well this year. We're really excited. We've had about 100 kids a week, and we're about, this is our third week. We have two weeks after this week left. It's hard to believe that's so quick. We've had a variety of activities, and we've been very fortunate with the weather to accommodate all those activities. I want to thank Doris and her staff for providing lunch and breakfast to all of the REACH, all of the REACH participants, and this year we were able to do that free of charge. I'd also like to thank Rachel at the Durham Parks and Rec and also the town of Lee for just working collaboratively to make REACH possible and using facilities and helping out with the afternoon program as well. Faculty have been busy as also with professional development. As Rebecca said, at each level, there's professional developing, development occurring. So the high school level, middle school, and elementary schools, they've been working on a variety of different curriculum as well as SEL and MTSS work, which has been very exciting. And then district-wide, K through 12, we've had the science committee join together, and that's K through 12 teachers working on scope and sequence in the science curriculum as well as documents that we will be sharing at a later date. And also the health department has been working, K through 12 health department has been working on scope and sequence. And later on this summer in August, we will have the world language department working on their five-through-12 program together. And leadership has also been meeting regularly to talk about restorative practices, codes of discipline, things like that. So we've been, it's been very active and busy, but enjoyable. If anyone has any questions? Great. Enrollment, there's in the backup information, there's enrollment data. The high school and the middle school look pretty typical. The numbers are what we expected for both groups. The senior class at the high school kind of, it drops off a little. The numbers there are a little low, but it's at what 96, the others are in the 200s. The elementary, and talking to David and Misty, they are, they are seeing a little fluctuation, but not significant fluctuation right now. There are families that are withdrawing and moving over the summer and some that are coming in. They still are not concerned about the numbers as they stand, and they're just continuing to watch that enrollment.
Brian?
Even a masked way, a grade four is getting pretty tight. How are they feeling about that one?
Yep. So if we have a family moving in, new to the district, and they have a fourth grade student, we would be talking to them about placement at Moheramet.
Okay. Sounds good.
The senior class, I believe that that was the year, they were freshmen when Dover High School opened, and so we have a relatively small Barrington cohort in that class.
Yes.
So not unusual, the way things have been going. Other questions for Suzanne on the enrollment?
And then the middle school, we're very excited for the August 23rd grand opening. We've been planning for that from 11 to 1:00. We have invitations out to a variety of dignitaries, and the planning will, has included some music. It's going to be some adults in the community performing and students as well, so that'll be exciting. We have refreshments, and we're, the planning for that continues, so we hope to see people there. The blasting has stopped, so that has ended this week, and you can see now a lot of the stone is being ground up, and it's starting to, they're starting to flatten out where the field will be. You can see some planting. There's been a lot of planting over this summer, and so that's starting to take shape. And the paving will be taking place soon also as, as some of those other projects are completed. The completion of some of the paving will, will also occur. But things are moving along as expected, and the field is, the delay on the field continues to be the same delay as it was before. So we don't see any other issues with that.
Just a reminder to anyone out there that if you've preserved a brick from the old building, they can now pick it up at the middle school, and donations are accepted if you wish to make one. And that goes towards, what is it, the playgrounds and other grounds, things that we're looking to do. But I picked up half a dozen today, so it's good. And they're heavy.
All right. Thank you, Suzanne. I don't believe we have a business administrative report tonight. We don't have a student representative report tonight. Finance committee, Brian?
Okay. We met on the 21st of June. It was actually a full house, even though Michael couldn't make it. We actually had Highland come in. It's a new, actually, they're not a new company. It's new to us as far as a V2G bus system where they were actually, we had a lot of good conversation because we had Cressy in there, we had New Hampshire Co-op, we had Highland, we had a lot of people, everyone involved in it was there. And the good thing is they really were willing to work with us as far as getting our, if we were to go forward with this, to make it work at the bus depot, which was really the best place for it because not only we have space, it's less work to do, and everything is kind of central. So we had a long discussion about that. We still have to look at the numbers. We haven't had a chance to look at those yet, and obviously we're not going to take any other steps until we at least reach that point. I do have the handouts from there that I can share with Michael because I did grab his, and I forgot to give it to you when you got here, on it, but it's pretty interesting, and there's also a PowerPoint that you can go over, that we can go over a lot of the stuff. They're willing to work with us, do a lot of the paperwork, do the grant paperwork. It actually fits in perfectly with our budget season, so if we do decide to go forward with it, just the timing of it all kind of fits in nicely with budget season. Basically, just instead of buying one bus next year, we would, we would replace one bus with this bus, or instead of buying two buses, it'd be one. But we're not even at that point yet. I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but I just want to know that it, it was a nice change from our other companies that we have dealt with when it comes to the electric bus. We did go into about, you know, what's the length, you know, that we should keep it, five years, 10 years. Really have to juggle the numbers around to see how that works. They did say we get about 134 miles per charge, which is in optimal conditions. Wintertime, it's a little bit less because you're running the heat, but difference being from what we were, we went over originally when Newvy was here versus them is the, the heat on the bus is electric where before the other ones that we talked about were actually diesel. It was actually a diesel heater. So it wasn't really zero emissions. It was, it on there. So, yeah. So we figured that out, too. So this is true zero emissions, if you want to call it that. So the rest of the meeting, we really talked, we talked with Jim Rizicky because I was trying to get ready as he was leaving, so him and Jasmine were in speaking with us, and we went over the capital improvement plan just to see where we're at, where we're going. You know, we're going to have to make some decisions during budget season, what's going to go forward in the next year, what's not. Because what's starting to happen, and I'm noticing it is, and this has happened before, where a lot of the projects that we keep putting off, it starts growing as we go down the line, so we're going to start chipping away at some of the, maybe some of the smaller stuff to get it off. But there is some major stuff that has to be done. We did ask Jim to go out and get some updated prices on some of the projects because he hadn't done it in about two years, and obviously the last two years, a lot's changed when it comes to labor and, labor and everything else that's involved in it. So, so basically that, we went over that. The fund balance is still in flux. We don't really have to decide what we're doing with that until the DOE 25 is submitted. And at that time, we were still in the middle of blasting. Obviously blasting is done, so that's come out of the contingency account from what I understand in my last meeting that I was in. We're still good on those numbers. And there was, we did discuss briefly a resident's request to transport students to practices that are based offsite. Just for football alone, we had a number just shy of $11,000 for the season, and we wanted to, and I know Heather brought up, we wanted to discuss with the full board because, oh, sorry, we wanted to discuss with the full board, but Heather wanted to talk about all the sports, what they cost as far as if we were to do all the sports that are offsite, because you can't really just do one. You got to be fair to all the sports that are offsite, which would be like golf and whatever else, all the sports.
Swimming, hockey.
Yep, yep. So, you know, to be fair at all, we got to look at those expenses. So that's something we'll look at probably in budget season. It's not something that's probably going to happen this year. Actually, it probably, it won't happen this year, but in the future, we'll see if that could be a budget item or not, and that'll be something that's discussed during budget season. Outside of that, did I forget anything, Heather, or?
Nope, I think that was it.
Yes.
So I was looking, it didn't look like Lisa Huppey was at the finance committee meeting, and I'm just in terms of the range, you know, does, is that an actual, like, will it, is it workable that, you know, in terms of when we're talking about winter, and I mean, you talked about what the range was in ideal conditions, but, you know, to me, the biggest concern would be we don't need a bus to be, you know, three quarters of the way through their route and then need a charge.
Yeah, we talked about that. It would be a bus that basically does a morning route and an afternoon route. It probably wouldn't be one that does long-distance sports routes or, and maybe, maybe with a Newmark getting back or something like that, but until we really get a good feel of the range, we can get out of it, we probably would just do a morning and afternoon run on it and then plug it in in between.
Do they have, I mean, they gave you what ideal would be, but do they have a realistic number for a cold January day?
They did give us a mileage.
He gave us, he gave us an number, but I left that notebook at home.
Yeah. It wasn't, it wasn't.
It wasn't actually too bad, and it was well within a normal route.
Yeah.
Because I asked, I had the same question.
And it also, these buses actually use regenerative braking, so as they're braking, it's recharging the batteries, where I believe the first ones we looked at were not doing that. So there are some pluses and minuses, and, you know, they'll be willing to work with our maintenance people, train them how to do the work. There's definitely not, there's no oils to be changed or anything like that, but there's still some other maintenance and safety items need to be aware of, you know, how to stay away from the core of the battery and things like that, and other things that may have to be replaced, fuses, things like that.
There was two bits I thought was particularly interesting. It's the same buses that the drivers currently prefer, so it's, it's the, it's the bus company they like. And then the other bit, which just flew out of my mouth. Oh, if there were a performance problem over time since releasing the buses, they would be responsible for changing out the batteries so that we did get the performance we were expecting if over the course of the lease, we were finding problems during the winter.
Cold weather, worst case, 60% of full. So it's been a 134. Is that about a 90 miles, 100 miles? Probably, sound about right? I don't know. My math brain isn't working today. But it sounds about right. So that's all I have.
And so you mentioned the participants were the New Hampshire Electric Co-op.
I don't think they were there.
Oh.
They weren't there.
They're part of it, though.
They, they're talking to them, but.
We met, we went with them.
Highland, which provides the financing and the technology for the charging, and then Cressy, which is where we have purchased our last, I don't know, most of our, most of our current full-size bus fleet. So as opposed to what we talked to last year was Bluebird buses as opposed to Thomas buses from Cressy.
Right, right. I mean, I've used Cressy in mine, you know, they, they're pretty much the biggest one around here, this part of New England at least. They're the biggest ones around. Actually, it was the owner of Cressy that was actually there speaking with us, answering questions. So we didn't have to go back and forth and find out information. He had it right there, and he knew it, so, which was good.
We were invited last Thursday down to see, and I couldn't make it.
I couldn't either, yeah.
Do you know if Jim or Sue were able to go, or Jim probably not?
Jim was away. I'm not sure if Sue attended.
If we do make a trip, they do have a big one in Beverly, Mass, so it's not too far away if we want to make a trip down there to see how theirs works. Open invitation, plus they have ones that come in from time to time around here that we may be able to go see, you know, so.
They're really pretty open about having us come to visit when we could make it work.
And again, if they, if we decide to go down this route, that presentation will be made to the entire board, so it's not going to be anything that's going to be, so nothing will be lost in translation when it comes through. You'll be able to ask the same questions we asked or, you know, see the same presentations we saw. But again, we're just waiting for the numbers, to kind of run the numbers and see how they compare to what we're doing now, because there were certain ones, you know. They came with some good numbers, but we still got to see how they fit into our use that we put them through, so.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Next is our unanimous consent agenda. Are there any items anybody would like to discuss separately?
Yeah, I'd like to ask some questions about the computer science teacher.
About which one, I'm sorry?
The computer science teacher.
Computer science teacher, all right. So we pulled that down to our first part of our discussion items below. Any others? All right. With that, then I will move approval of the unanimous consent agenda, including a hiring of a high school world language Spanish teacher, approval of a middle school leave of absence from approximately November 7th through the end of the school year, and for second read adoption, approval of policy JLCJA emergency plan for sports-related injuries and additional protocols for athletics participation. Second, second from Brian. All those in favor? Six in favor, the unanimous consent agenda is approved. So we'll move right into the high school science teacher. I'm sorry, computer science teacher.
So I wanted to get a little bit more information about what this person would be teaching, particularly since the computer science bit, and on their resume, there is no actual programming skills listed.
So it's actually not a computer science position, it's a business position. So what ended up happening, originally it was a business position, and looking at the classes and the program we would like to keep increasing for the future, we tried to switch it to a computer science position. We could not find anybody for all computer science. And so what the person we did find actually is, has a lot of business background, but he can do some programming. And so the Adobe classes, which is our highest class when you're looking at requests from students, he has taught graphic design in Adobe before. And so his actual schedule doesn't change from what we had planned in Power School.
Okay. That was it?
Okay.
All right. So then I'll move approval of the hiring for the high school business teacher. Second by Brian. All those in favor? Six in favor, that one's approved, too.
Thank you.
All right. School nutrition program price increases. So we have some information in the packet. Hi, Doris.
Hi, good evening. I'll read this for the folks watching at home. So we're, we've been honored to have supplied meals to no cost, at no cost to parents since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. Throughout this period, when other districts cut back on menu items, our menu quality remained high, and we managed to fulfill planned menus with limited substitutions throughout the past year. Unfortunately, with supply chain issues and labor shortages, our food costs have increased at an alarming rate. Also, our child nutrition staff were given a much deserved mid-year wage increase to make our program more competitive with other places of employment. We were able to hire and fill open positions, and we were at full staff by May 1st, knocking on wood, with some well-experienced new team members. To meet the goal of a balanced budget in the coming school year, our meal prices must be increased. I'm suggesting an increase of 25 cents for all paid meals to meet that goal and not to have to increase next year, hopefully. Currently, our prices for breakfast, K8 are $1.25, 912 are $1.50. So the increase would be $1.50 for breakfast for grades K through 4, and $1.75 for, for the high school students. Lunch is currently $2.75, so that would be $3 at elementary schools. Middle school is currently $3, it would be $3.25. High school is currently $3.25, it would be $3.50. This is actually below some districts that are in the same status as ours with low free and reduced rates, so I think that we're doing pretty well in that capacity. And as we all know, we all do groceries at the grocery store, and everything's gone up. My supplies are through the roof. My gloves alone, and we use thousands and thousands of gloves, have tripled in cost, so alone with everything else. Moving forward, we continue to serve local farm-fresh milk at high school and middle school as it is important to ensure that students are drinking more milk. Milk contains three of the four nutrients of concern that most Americans do not get enough of. These nutrients are calcium, potassium, and vitamin D. Fiber is the fourth nutrient, however, there is no fiber in the milk. But we do serve whole grain for just about everything we sell. Our child nutrition team works very hard. If you were to look at the last year, we served 72,348 breakfasts district-wide and 199,222 lunch meals. This does not count the à la carte, where some students would just come in and buy a sandwich or a slice of pizza. That is just the full meals, which they got free thanks to the USDA extending the waivers. It comes to an average of 407 breakfasts daily and 1,120 lunches daily, again, not counting all the additional things that students buy. It's a significant increase over the past years, especially for breakfast, and we hope that those students who got used to eating it at school will continue once, you know, meals are no longer free. So it was mainly due to free meals, and we hope that they've enjoyed the food over the pandemic area, and they'll continue to support our program once this much-needed benefit has ended. However, the USDA is really good at pulling last-minute changes, so if it does, that would be our price on the books. If they pull it a week before school starts, which is when I would expect it to happen and say it continues to be free, then we'll just go forward like we did last year. Just for parents to know, coming year, we're planning on more vegetarian and vegan foods available. We have more and more students that are eating that way, they're choosing to eat that way. More ethnic recipes. Kids are going out to eat more, and they're expanding their palates. We're going to continue our farm-to-school efforts, and we want to bring back community dinners. Thank you to the board, our supportive administrators, and our community for allowing me to be a part of this amazing program for the last 10 years. I'm looking forward to the next one.
Brian?
Because we're going back to paying for meals now.
Yes.
If, no, if people did not fill out a free and reduced form last year, day one.
Yes.
They're going to have to.
They can actually fill out those forms as early as today.
Right.
And it's important that they do because our free and reduced rate has dropped to 4%. We were at one time up to 8%.
Right.
It's averaged over these past 10 years, probably between 6 and 8%. But because people didn't have to, they were getting the meals free anyways. They didn't fill out the forms. It's very important that they do.
And that's why I wanted to just make note of anybody who's watching that.
Yes.
You know, it doesn't cost anything to, to.
Right.
Fill it out. It's all private, nobody knows. You can even go online, I believe, and do it.
You can do it online.
Yeah.
On family.titan-k12.com, and I am the only one that sees that application. No one else sees it. It does not go out to the schools.
And to put it in perspective, too, my district also went up 25 cents per meal in same reason. It's supply, I mean, you're not, some of the stuff, you're not, not getting it, you're just having to upgrade what you're getting in order to get it on time. For example, like pizza dough was a big one where we couldn't get our regular pizza dough, so we had to upgrade, and that costs a lot more. Great pizza dough, but.
I mean, we, we go out to bid every year, and, you know, we have a list of items that we bid on, and if that item wasn't in stock, which happened probably to 30 to 40% of our items, then you look to see what else they have. So you're going to pay more because the things we bid on, we have a better price. So we have to give expected usage, and they go to the companies and get a good price based on that usage. So if you're buying from someone else, you're getting the price that anyone, any restaurant would get, or.
Have you had to readjust menus because of supply issues, not coming in on time, or?
People maybe noticed that the breakfast menu was adjusted. It was like, you may get this, and I have a list of things, because that was the hardest thing to fill.
Right.
The lunch menus, we did really well, and the reason for that was that we changed our order days at our elementary schools to Monday because when, we had them all coming in on Wednesday, and I'd be putting in the order and I'd be coming to the warehouse on Thursday, and I, ugh. So what happened was. So what happened was if it wasn't in for the Wednesday order, I could get it on the Monday truck at the elementary school and bring it over. So I became a truck driver, but it kept our menu the way we wanted it to be. So, and also, we, we ordered a little ahead, like if it was two weeks away and it was in stock, we'd grab it. So we don't have the refrigerator or freezer space to order more than that, to get everything two weeks ahead, but, you know, my managers really worked hard too to, to make sure that they had what they needed on hand and, and I put on a lot of miles behind the wheel.
No, you guys did a great job last year.
Thank you.
Really thank you and your, and your staff, because I know it was not an easy year, but the food that I tasted between meetings here and grand openings was outstanding.
Three out of four managers are, have culinary arts degrees and the fourth one has many years of restaurant experience. So I have really well-trained staff and, and it shows. They have, they really care about what they, what they make, what they put out, even to the kids. I mean, I think the, the kids at the high school are going to go nuts when they get their omelet bar back, their omelet station made to order. So, and we're going to try and do that here as well, now that we have a little better space. So.
Denise?
Yes, I'd love to see community dinners.
Me too.
If we can have them.
Those would so much fun.
If the pandemic allows it. It'd be great to have some here. That would be really, really cool. Yes, you are to be commended and your staff is to be commended. You did just incredible job. Food is always excellent. And I do hope the USDA comes through because I think that's really important. And I know it, unfortunately, the downside is that it does mess with your free and reduced lunch numbers. I think that's probably true across the board and every school district would be my guess. So maybe we need to figure out a different way to, you know, deter, not put so much emphasis on those numbers. But I just think it's really important to be able to provide all students free lunch and breakfast and lunch if they want it. So I know there's nothing you can do about it, but I'm just going to put it out there.
So I get my voice heard many times over the year, but my goal, I, everyone's ultimate goal is to have universal free meals, but at the very least, they should increase the income guidelines for free and reduced meals because what they allow for those free meals is ridiculous. You know, a parent of, you know, a single mom with a child, the, the amount is so low that she couldn't even pay her rent.
Right.
So it's, it's just insane and especially the way that the cost of living has gone up this year, you know, I wish they would at least do that if they won't do the universal free meals.
Just on top of that, the free and reduced also helps adequacy funding.
Oh, I know, I know. And that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, so it's important to.
They may need to figure out a different way to determine. I know, I know.
They're changing it this year, but next year they're going to have to go back and it's, it's been the, an issue for two years now that we just, that I don't think the state knows how to solve.
Matt?
I'd just add my thanks for the wonderful meals. Am I reading this right, that the idea to raise 25 cents is for this year, the school year, and the next school year?
It would be 25 cents and the next year we would not have to raise.
Okay.
Prices. Because I think that, you know, looking at my numbers and, you know, what, what's hard is not knowing how many kids will continue to eat. You know, our numbers have been off the charts and a lot of them have formed habits and will continue and a lot of parents have enjoyed not having to make lunches and even sending their kids off, have breakfast at school. So I'm hoping that that will continue, but we don't know. So, you know, I'm sure that it will drop off at some point to some, at some degree, but if we went up to 20, I think that we might be okay, but if we do 25, then it might give us a buffer for next year as well.
Heather?
I thought I remember you saying at one point that there is an advantage if more people get not the a la carte, but they get the actual meal instead. And a lot of times they're very similar, but they prefer to buy them a la carte, particularly if the older grades. Is that right?
The older grades don't like to be told what to take, but they've gotten used to having to take fruit or a vegetable. They can take both, of course. We are bringing back salad bars at the elementary schools, which will be great because kids eat more fruits and vegetables when they choose it themselves. If you put it on their plate, it might ruin their meal and they might not eat anything. So, you know, we want them to be able to take the salad bar. And that's going to be hard because now we're going to have kindergarten through third grade who hasn't, who have, they haven't done that, you know? And it maybe, maybe the third graders did for a little while, but not, not the whole year. And it's been a long time. But, you know, in the past, even our kindergarten kids, they very quickly, they loved it. They loved being in charge of their plate. So like I said, our, our elementary school kids ate more vegetables than any school I'd ever been in because they got to choose their own and we had great salad bars. So hopefully that'll all come back.
My only question about the rates that you're proposing is that the milk having a different price between the elementary and the middle school, high school, is it the same product?
It's not the same product, no. We buy hood milk, which we actually get the state bid price on that, so we don't actually have to go out to bid for that. We buy Con Two Cook Creamery local milk that we serve bulk at, at high school and middle school. The kids have really taken to that. It's kind of funny to watch them. Some of them, it's like they can't even wait to get out to start drinking their chocolate milk. Some of them take the chocolate and put white in it because it's, it's maybe a little too chocolatey for them, but their nutrients actually match very closely to the hood 1%. So it's got to be really good stuff. Their cocoa must be better. But it's costing us more. So just to cover that. And that's actually not for the meal because the milk comes with the meal. So this will offset, a lot of kids just buy a milk with their snack or whatever. That will offset the added cost.
Right.
Because we're not going to increase the cost of the meal to cover their milk.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're looking for a motion here on the rates for the next school year?
I'll make a motion to approve the school nutrition program price increases.
We have a motion from Denise and a second from Brian. Any further discussion or questions for Doris? All those in favor of approving the rates for next year? Six in favor, the school nutrition rate approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is the communication position and there's not necessarily action proposed tonight, although there could be. What you have in the backup materials are a job description that has a couple of fill-in-the-blanks items in it as well. This is the job description that would be a communications specialist to work with the volunteer communications director for the next year at least. Do I have that right, Suzanne?
Yep.
Okay. So we're looking for input from the board and anything that we would like to see rethought or, or change to hear questions about it. And then I would expect to bring this back for approval at the next meeting if we're not ready tonight. So.
We, looking at a 260 or 240 day, do you think, for this?
I think, we've talked about both and I don't know, I don't believe there's been any decision around that, but probably a 240.
That's what I figured, yeah. Okay.
Can you elaborate on that for me? I apologize.
260 days is, like Suzanne's 260 days, she's all year round.
Okay.
240 days is like an assistant principal where they work during the school year, but they get 20 extra days off during the, whenever they choose to take them according to the policy. But usually the pay is, it's reflected in the pay because it's short.
In this position, they may take it at different times depending on.
Right.
What's most appropriate.
It's not a teaching position, so.
So they may work more in the summer, it may not be the summer that they take the time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Denise?
I, I don't have an issue with the job description. I think it is very well-written. I am concerned about a full-time position, just the cost. I really am concerned about that. And I know we found money to be able to pay for it for the first year, but, you know, we have to continue to fund whatever we come up with. So I, I, at least for the first year, honestly, I would prefer to look at something that is a little less full-time. I'm not sure exactly where the sweet spot is on that, but I have a real concern about hiring a full-time person, being mindful of the other positions that we've added as well. So that's just my only comment. As far as the job description itself, I think it's, it looks good.
Heather?
So first, I will say that I'm surprised by the position because the position seems very junior. And my understanding was that we try to be getting someone who may have a little bit more experience, although we may not have them full-time, so that when Amy cycles off her essentially volunteer role, we're not leaving someone in charge that isn't capable of doing it. Because this position reads as a content creator, like you're going to make cute graphics in Adobe and you're going to help us spruce up the website. It doesn't seem like someone who's really going to be ironing out message and platform and standards, which is what I thought we were really talking about. So Amy, do you want to talk a little bit about that? Because we talked about that as well.
We did. And that was a real challenge as I tweaked the job description. I, I heard from you all that you wanted it to not be perhaps the, the senior level that I was looking for, but, but to respond to that, I think that it's a really good point because the way that I've been talking about this in my meetings with individual staff members throughout the summer is this person, the, you know, the bucket will stop somewhere with communications. And if it's, if it's not going to be added to the job description of someone else's role of a superintendent or assistant superintendent or a principal, we need to understand where that job description, where that buck stops. And I, I would always argue that it has to be with that person because then they become who everyone else in the staff can look to when they need guidance, standards, expectations, best practices, training, and it's not just a content creator. So we may need another tweak to that end. And I think to the, to your point about the, the full-time, I think we, I think we're going to learn a lot with this position about what it is and, and where they're most needed. And I think there is room for flexibility, both in the 240 days and with it being like a four-day-a-week or a shorter day, something that gives you room financially because I understand you've had a lot of challenges with budget. But I would, I would, I would also say you will learn as you go around, you know, the pros and cons of having that person less than 260 or less than full-time. Because if something happens on a day they're not there, who is going to, you know, be owning that? So I'm happy to answer any other questions you all have about the process.
Seems like these, these essential functions that are in here, it's, looking at it, it's very, seems very difficult to do on a, on a part-time basis because it is, you know, a good amount of functions and they're essential functions.
Yeah.
So I mean, there's nothing against, I have nothing against these functions. For example, attending off-hours district meetings and events to gather information to media for publication.
Yeah.
That's, that's a part-time job just done in and of itself.
Right.
So you want to add in all the other functions. I mean, I, I could definitely see this as a 240, maybe a, cut it down a few more days if you had to. Yeah, 230 or something like that, but with the, with the salary to reflect that. But there's definitely, I don't see a part-time position in, in these essential functions. So it's, there's got to be a happy medium somewhere that we're, that we need to find. So just my two cents, so.
I, I'm sorry, do you want to go, Dan?
No, go ahead.
Well, I, I'm just going to say, it's a lot easier to start part-time and say, oh, yeah, you know, really, we see where these gaps are. Because, you know, I would say half a loaf is better than no loaf, you know? Yes, would we prefer a full-time position? Absolutely. But I, I'm just seriously concerned in terms of other positions that we've added and where we're going to find the money in future budgets. And given the increase in everything, which we know is happening with inflation, I think it's easier to start, you know, maybe three-quarters time or what have you, and add on, you know, yes, is the potential of, of increasing, rather than if we start full-time, full salary, you know, and then we're scrambling, what are we going to cut? Which capital improvements are we going to cut? As you mentioned, you know, we've been putting some of those in the back burner. So that's, that's my position. I honestly could not support, I'm supportive of this position, but I really couldn't support a full-time position for the next.
Well, that's why we, I was talking about cutting down the days. You go to 240, you go to 220, you go to 220. That's not full-time and that affects the salary as well. But the problem you run into is you have a part-time person doing a full-time job, you're going to end up losing them halfway through the year because they're like, this is just too much from what I'm getting paid with the amount of hours I got to put in.
Then we prioritize. We prioritize what we want to have them do. We say, okay, you know, we want you to tackle the website.
But if they don't do it, somebody else has to.
And I think.
So then it falls under the lap of somebody else.
I, I agree and given that, given that there may be, we may, there may be a need to compromise, the way that I would address that is to go through this job description, probably with the leadership team, with the superintendents and the principals, and make sure we identify, in some cases, some of these line items are being done by someone else right now. And so making sure that those things are being addressed and that those people will be working together and that in other cases, that we're making sure that we're prioritizing, you know, what, what needs to happen. Can I ask a question? I don't know if it's appropriate in this venue, just out of my total lack of knowledge here. If, once you move off of 100% position with a salary, with benefits, in corporate America, sometimes you immediately go to no benefits and that, and so.
It's pro-rated, usually.
It's appropriate.
It's pro-rated.
It's pro-rated. So then you would get a portion of your vacation time, a portion of sick days, a portion of health benefits? I don't, I don't, I literally just am asking, I don't know how you will be weighing that in terms of the cost of the role.
But I think that we would need to determine what, what it is, where the goal is for the, for how much time we want this person to.
Yep.
Or this position to be, determine what the job description would look like.
Yeah.
What's reasonable, depending on how much time, and then we, then we can examine what that means as far as salary and benefits are concerned.
Sure.
If you want to start the reverse way and start with the salary and benefits and then work backwards accordingly, that's another way to do it. But I do, I do think it's important to remember that if there are certain goals that we have about the way we communicate with the community, that we may not be able to reach all those goals in the first year if we are hiring a part-time person. So we just need to be realistic about that.
I agree. You will, you will not. It'll just, it'll, everything will go slower.
One thing, and I'm glad you brought it up, Denise. One of the things I always, I'm always concerned about is adding a new position. While you can make generally an argument that in the short term, money can be found to cover the costs, you know, those, those occur in perpetuity. The thing about this position, though, as we discussed in the workshop and other conversations with the communications committee, the, it strikes me that the bulk of the work is, is in the earliest phases of the position. In, in terms of what, what this person is leading is sort of a culture change around communication and, and really, you know, leading everybody in the district to do things a different way, a more efficient way, a more organized way. It concerns me that the, you know, part-time approach, especially in the earliest phases, might not yield the successes that we need to build on. It's, of course, balanced against the cost. And then, you know, the other piece of it is maybe, I realize the cost in the short term would be higher, but maybe we look at this as a contract position for the first couple of years to allow us the flexibility, the, you know, not establish the permanence of the position so that we can invest in the early successes, learn what it's going to take to keep it going, and then identify what the right permanent position is to keep it moving.
I would suggest that we understand enough about this, these kinds of positions in other school districts. We've done enough, I've done enough research, we have enough data around how these jobs work long-term. And while I know it's a new position and I've agreed to help get this person up and running, I think that there, a lot of the work is in fact quite long-term. There's not, you're going to need someone on day 1,000 who is still waking up, thinking about all of those same issues, making sure that those best practices in today's communications are working for everyone, both the community, parent, new parents coming in, new staff coming in, and that that, those standards are being met over, over time. I think if, another, just a lack of knowledge on my part, typically with a new position like this, would it be offered as a 12-month contract or a 10-month contract and then renew? renewed by the school board? Or is it, I don't know how that works for employees in this kind of role.
So it kind of depends on how it gets classified in the end, but essentially, yes, it's a, usually it's a one-year cycle. It's not, on a budget basis, it's, yes, it's the school board, but if it's not an administrative position or a teaching position, it doesn't require board approval for the actual transaction.
I see.
Can I, given your experience and your knowledge of the sort of marketplace of people with this skill set, is it naive to think that, let's say we did go the contract approach for maybe a couple of years, would it be reasonable to not plan necessarily, but foresee that person becoming the permanent person? Would someone be willing to sort of go through that phased approach where they started as a, and I realize you're, you know, you're not in the head of the individual, right? But is it, is it something people do in this line of work?
Well, clarify for me, let's take this hypothetical person, what would the pros and cons be for that person to be in a contract role versus an employee role?
One thing I remember you mentioning is there might be, especially given the changes in people's, you know, work lives with the pandemic, there might be a number of people in the community interested in this position who are interested in some degree of part-time and/or flexibility. The contract position might be, might be appealing to them in the short term while they figure out what it is they want long-term.
That wasn't what I was thinking about it. Yes, we were talking about that, but I think more in terms of possibly 240 days or possibly a four-day work week. I think that what you want to do, if you're going to do this, I really would suggest that you commit to a person. If that person doesn't work out, that's one thing, but commit to the role and let that person have the opportunity to establish themselves and the trust of the community. One of the biggest, one of the reasons this is going to take years is it's a large district, it's a large enough district that there's a lot of people who have worked in certain ways for many years. And so to make those changes is going to require time. And if we switch those people out a couple of times, we're going to start over. And so I think that would, from a budget perspective, I would say that would be lost money.
In one of the last meetings where he was on the board, Tom Newkirk said essentially, when it comes to communications, do something. And I think that's where, that's, in large measure, that's where I'm at right now. I think that what we have in the budget is $50,000. There may be some other places where Suzanne, you and Jim can take a look at other places where we can allocate some additional funds. That $50,000 has been in the budget for a couple of years. That's not a new appropriation. We just haven't, we just haven't moved forward with utilizing it. And I think that we should, you know, we need to either look at using that appropriation for a part-time position, or we need to ask administration to look at other trade-offs for additional funds for a full-time position. I almost don't care which one, as long as we can do something and start moving forward.
I do have more things. So when we list the supporting materials, the third one is a demonstrated experience in proficiency in video productions. And I honestly didn't care if the person we hire has that skill set because I keep looking, again, when I look at this, I'm looking at the person who will be you in a year when you step away. And that isn't the skills I need them to have to be in the door.
I agree, and I want to clarify, the job description that I gave to Jim was a very good job description for this kind of role, but it didn't take into account who is doing video now. I don't know who the gentleman were here earlier this evening. That may not at all be a role that is required of this position. If you, if everyone feels they have sufficient staff for that piece, we can, we can take that piece out. It doesn't mean that they're going to spend less time, but it's simply, these are all the kinds of skills that we expect to see. And they may in fact need to do a little bit of, you know, video editing because video is, any communications professional will tell you, it's where everything is going. You need to be comfortable, even if it's just off of phones, to be able to take things and quickly make them accessible in a variety of ways. But to be able to do this kind of thing isn't necessarily the skill level. Does that answer your?
Yeah, well, I, not that they're really questions for you per se, as much as they're questions for us in terms of, this isn't what I thought we were getting when we talked, when we finished the communications workshop. This isn't where I thought we were going. And if this is where we want to go, that's fine. I just, well, it's not fine, I'm disappointed. But this is, you know, if that's, I'm just having a disconnect moment because where I thought we were and what this reads are very different. Like, this isn't the person that's going to really work with teachers on doing communications and standardizing and coming up with best practices. This isn't how I read this. This is the 22-year-old college grad who knows how TikTok works and can rock some Adobe and make some cool stuff and make the website cleaner and more accessible, or accessible is wrong, user-friendly maybe. But that's not the experience and depth and what I thought we would be bringing. And so that's the disconnect I'm having reading this. And so, yeah, that's my disconnect. And that's not an Amy question, that's an us question.
I see this as, so I see that as one component of this and maybe a early career skill set that can be built upon. And really, what we're looking for is somebody who can both complement and extend Amy's skill set as the subject matter expert and then grow into these other capacities as well. Because there's certainly a lot of things in here that are well beyond TikTok. So I guess that's how I, that's how I see it. This is, this is the capacity to leverage the expertise.
And just to clarify, I had, my expectation in my role here was not actually a full year, it was less than that. So I'm happy to do what I can beyond that, but I do have a full-time job. So I would, I just want to make sure we're all working with realistic expectations.
And to Heather's point, that's one of the concerns I would have is, is I wouldn't want to be overly reliant on Amy's generosity and her investment in leading this and making it successful. And assuming she can fill that gap, let's say, let's say it extends an extra year beyond what we anticipate. She's, she's making it clear to us that she's not going to be able to fill that void. We want the person we hire to be successful and we want our goals to be successful. And if we, if we don't plan for that, we may, we may be dealing with an early failure, which is something that can set you back instead of incrementally move you forward.
Heather, I see what you're talking about in the required skills, right? But I don't see that in the essential functions. So I'm wondering if the disconnect isn't between us, but it's the difference between the required skills and the functions.
I have other things about the placement of things and, you know, because supporting teachers is like the 10th bullet down when it should be number two. Or, you know, there are things along that nature that I'm not, you know, like, we're not asking for demonstrated proficiency in writing. We're not asking for demonstrated proficiency in Office 365, which is the way our teachers do work. Right? So there, I'm having some issues.
Well, what I don't think you're having, it feels less like a philosophical confusion or philosophical conflict versus just an editing. Like, if we can marry or fill the gaps between the essential functions and the skills required to do those essential functions, then I think that your concerns will be alleviated.
Because I know when I read a job ad, you know, stuff pops up on LinkedIn, I'll kind of skim the front-end bullet points and then I'm going straight to, what do you want me to be able to demonstrate proficiency in? And that's, you're right, there's a disconnect, like, all these demonstrated proficiencies, but there aren't demonstrated proficiencies in the larger roles that we want them to be able to take on, that we do in the front end of the job description.
Could I comment on that? I think that's a, first of all, I completely agree with what you're saying, and I think that's a really good point. I've also noticed that that, in, just in my industry, that that is a longtime disconnect in job descriptions because when you, when you want to make sure they know how to do things, it does all sound very basic. We don't need to learn, we don't need to know computer programming, we don't need to necessarily know French, we need to be able to use a computer and our, our real skills come in the strategic thinking we have about a community and the needs and the project management of big picture thinking. And that, I don't think is reflected in this draft. And I'm happy to move forward however you all would recommend and sitting down with any of you and saying, let's, let's get this tightened up. I don't think, I think my expectation when I sent that, submitted this draft was that that actually was going to happen before this meeting and I, that was a mistake on my part.
Miscommunication? I had to do it, I'm sorry.
You had to, you had to. I understand.
Get out.
So I think what we want to do is provide some guidance to the administration as to how to refine this and then bring it back. My opinion is that, is this is going to be somebody who is dedicated to this role going forward, it needs to be a district employee, not a contract position. And I think that what I'm hearing is that there is enough to do here, both in terms of volume and in terms of skill set, that a larger FTE is desirable, a larger percentage as opposed to a smaller amount. I don't think that fits in what we have budgeted. So I think this is where we want to, we need to, we need to provide some guidance to Jim and Suzanne as to what to come back with in terms of, in terms of the next round of, as we try to get closer to something we can, we can move forward with. So my, I guess my opinion is I would say, I would like to see as a, as a direct role, not a contract role, and as, and at least a school year position, full-time position during the school year. I don't know that it needs to be full-time year-round based on the volume in the summertime.
Oh, I think, and I'm going to interrupt you, sorry. You, when I think about the time, we talked a lot with Suzanne and Jim about the time teachers have to sort of absorb things, that is the summer. So if their professional development in the summer is working through some of the communications bits, then we're going to want the person around when the teachers have the bandwidth to absorb.
Yes, I mean, yes and no. Teachers have, are contracted to, what, 185 days? So we don't have them in the summertime unless they're doing something, you know, on top of that.
Right, but that's, you know, if we, they put in for PDH for the communication stuff specifically, or like if we're doing a workshop for, say, communication captains with, I'm making stuff up now, communication captains within a school or within a department, and then we start filtering down. I don't know how it would work, but saying that they're not going to be around in the summer limits us if we're using the summertime for website or really deeper dives with individual members. That's just my flag on, don't write off summer entirely. But I get the point, we got to balance stuff, so.
There are other benefits to hiring a, a school year or a school year plus a little bit position in that the pool of candidates can include highly skilled parents who would like to have more flexibility in their summertime, which may or may not, this is just my, my thoughts as I provide input for the next round. That's going to require us to take a look at the budget and find additional dollars to do that because the $50,000 that's allocated is not going to cover that. So that's, that's where I'm at with this one right now.
And again, I really can't, couldn't support more. I just, I'm like looking at, you know, we had, we added the additional, you know, science teacher, I mean, obviously we have the DEIJ position, just all the different positions that, and yes, we have that money now, but I'm just like looking ahead and saying, okay, then we get to the next budget cycle and how are we going to, you know, have all that money in the budget and still maintain, you know, not cut our capital improvement plan again or what have you? Or if we want to buy electric buses or whatever it is, I just, I just feel like, I just, personally, I just could not support more than that.
And this is exactly what I would like to hear from the rest of the board as we provide that input because it would be silly to, for us to say, write a full-time, scope this out full-time if we're going to expect to come back in two weeks and not go that way.
I would just say, you come up with a list of required skills to meet the essential functions and then find out what that would cost us to find that person.
Is that input to work with?
Yes, thank you.
Final thoughts? Thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Our last discussion item here tonight is the board goals for 2022-23. What you had in, what you received ahead of time is a marked-up version showing changes from what we had discussed going way back to May. And then you have a hard copy that I dropped on the table that is the same, exact same as that marked-up version, just without showing the markup. So it's a clean version of that. So this is, you know, we've talked in the past about what is this, what are these goals supposed to be? And how do we use them? And, you know, are these our goals, are they, are they directive to the superintendent? Almost everything's going to be directive to the superintendent at some level. And should all of these have the school board as directly involved? And as I've given this some more thought and read through this again, I don't, I don't think these need to be all things that the school board is actively doing. These are the things that we're saying are high visibility and high importance that we want to keep a close eye on and/or be directly involved in over the course of the year and make sure that they get done. So I think it's okay if we're not directly in all of these. I also opined, last time we discussed this, that I thought there were too many here. I think that's still the case, but I have a really hard time deciding what, what to eliminate out of here. So I guess that's, that's where I'm at in this, in this process. And I think we should just kind of walk through them, starting at the beginning as a facilitation for discussion unless, unless there's a specific opinion otherwise.
Are you saying it's too many themes or too many goals within the themes?
Too many specific goals when you look at the number of total goals. You know, and obviously some of them, there's just one and some of them.
Because the four themes seem pretty good.
Right, yeah, no, I think the four themes are, that kind of distilled out from our past discussion pretty well.
Right.
So starting at the top, the superintendent transition, there's just one goal there. This seemed like there was quite a bit of consensus about this, but is there any further discussion on what is, this is reflected here? No?
Good.
Okay. And then going into communications, so this obviously relates very closely with, with the discussion that we just had, is the proposed goal 2.1 is hire a communications person. And then it gets into some more tactical items. And, and six goals is a lot in this, in this theme and maybe it's overly directive, but this would be, you know, how we land here is going to steer some of what the communications priorities are for the next year.
So we are doing, not we, but global, we are doing the website this year that has to be done, right?
Yes, Josh has been working with his department to explore different possibilities with website change.
And this isn't our timeline, but the district's timeline we're parroting? Or are we trying to push something?
Suzanne, I think you and Jim had proposed those dates that are in there right now.
Yes, Jim and I met with Josh and we talked about possible dates and these seem the most feasible.
Okay. So 2.2 is something we're doing anyway. And so 2.3 would be the district calendars and as part of the website, that would be part of that as well?
Yes.
I'm trying, I'm trying to cut you down here, Michael, but we're already doing some of these. I guess the ones that I was looking at, 2.5 and 2.6, is maybe things that fall off for next year. But then we want Amy to really work with the best practices and guidelines, so I don't, I don't know what to do about that.
I think some of that may depend on whether or not we have someone in the communications position to help that work.
2.6 is inventory, the social media platforms, is that just find out who is posting on what?
Yes, and the tools that we're, how are we using, what tools are we using in different, in different contexts between different school buildings, different classes, different clubs, different sports?
Ah, okay.
And probably it shouldn't say social media because it's more than just that, probably it's probably communication. it's probably communications.
Yeah, messaging, yeah.
Probably, yeah.
I would suggest, in terms of training the staff, by February, well, oh, it's February through June, I mean, I'm, you know, I agree that there's an awful lot of goals under this. Obviously, if there's going to be a new website, there has to be some training, but I'm not sure we actually need to have it spelled out in that way.
Just thinking back to the workshop, and maybe training's not the right word, but the, the leadership component, to me, is one of the most critical elements of the communications position. Because we're in an inherently awkward time when we want to, we want to influence this change in communication, but where we've come to is a, is sort of a, you know, we've not provided this direction in leadership, right? And the people who work for the district have filled that void on their own, through their own efforts, through their own research. And one of the most critical elements of the success of the communication change is to compel people to maybe, in certain or many cases, drop what they've invested their own time and energy in, in favor of something we've identified as more streamlined, more centralized, more efficient, better for parents, better for students. So I mean, maybe, maybe we rephrase that. I wouldn't want to let it drop as a goal, though. I feel like it's a really critical element to the success of the communications transition that we're trying to enter into. Other thoughts? Am I, I mean, I'm not sure what the training is necessarily because we still don't have the inventory of all the things that we're doing. Maybe Amy can shed some light on it. She saw me struggling, so she's stepping up to bail me out. Thank you.
Well, I, I'm not sure what you're looking at. We were just trying to find it online. So can you clarify what we're, what we're looking at right now? These are board goals?
Sure. Use my copy.
Use Lucy's copy.
Lucy didn't get a copy.
It continues here.
Thank you.
I can read off my computer.
So page two, 2.5.
Thank you.
And 2.6 are the two issues that have come up as, and one of the general things that we're looking to maybe do is refine this so it's not quite so big.
Yeah, and I'm happy to be helpful with that in any way that you'd like to me to be helpful because I agree, it's, it's, it does feel like a lot. Just so you know, one of the things that I've been working on this summer is starting that social media inventory. It's really exciting. And we're going to leave it at that right now.
A lot of tentacles?
Yes. A lot of opportunities for improvement.
See, the branding is going on right there, opportunities for improvement.
See?
Tentacles is not a good word. Okay, I'll drop that one.
It's been a while since we looked at this, but I believe that these were related, at least, to the low-hanging fruit that you had.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so as I thought about, and I think that there's an opportunity here for sort of this summer to maybe clarify a little bit about exactly what I'm going to be doing to get, as you get ready to hire someone, so we all really understand how this works. So I can, I will commit to clarifying a little bit of that on my, on my end. But some of those pieces, I've been interviewing different sort of lead communicators around the district, and will continue to be doing that through the summer and early fall, you know, like the athletic department, different principals, starting to understand which staff members. So I'm starting to map out, one of the things that I want for the school district to have is a map of when there is a piece of information that is to be communicated, what happens? And does everyone know what should happen? And does everyone agree? And does everyone who is in that list of items own it and know how to do what they need to do? So there's training opportunities within the website, there's understanding, there's best practices around do this before you do that so that, you know, things don't show up on Facebook before they show up on a, on a website, et cetera. So lots of just opportunities for just organization and clarity that I think gives everyone a lot of confidence in their communications because they know this is how we're going to do things. And that is a process of both mapping it, agreeing to the map, and then training everybody in how to do that. So that's one piece I'm working on. Another piece is that social media piece, that I think there's still a lot of conversations that'll need to happen around what you all want to do with social media. But we start by saying, well, what are we doing now? And I, so I think one night I found 43 Facebook pages that were just for sports teams, just at the high school, just on Facebook. So there's 43 different group pages, some of them haven't been posted on in four years, some of them only had two posts, some of them have three posts every day, but they all have, they're all owned by someone or not. And that was a starting place. And so there's, we know that it'll continue on from there. But to be able to communicate to all of the administrators of those pages, for example, one thing, I'm not saying today we're going to do, but an example of something that we might discuss is to say to the administrator of a social media page that has your school district's name in it, they must have a couple things understood. First, that there must be a staff member who is also an administrator, because if you're a parent, your child will graduate, somebody needs to keep owning that page. Two, you have to have certain understandings of what can go on that page relative to the school district. If, if you're talking about the ski team, perhaps not let it be a discussion space for the school budget. Let it be a place for the ski team. I mean, I'm just suggesting some best practices around these ideas. So, so those are some places that we can get some clarity. You know, we, we, people will do what they will do on social media, we know that. But helping administrators to understand their responsibilities and having a branded page as, as a representative of the school district, there's some responsibility that comes with that. And the PTOs are the best example of that. But there are many, many, many others that we'll have to think about. So that's, that's my comment on the social media process. Is there anything else that needed clarity on this besides, I don't know how you want to move forward, if you want to meet later or, or talk more about this tonight, about these goals?
Is the, how, how fundamental is the training element of the communication person's role to the scope of the work?
It's fundamental because you need someone who is, you trust, to be not only clarifying best practices, but also having an expectation of them. If, if, if it, you know, we'll just take the 22-year-old, if sent out a memo to all of the teachers saying, please do things this way now, I would suggest that would be met with mixed success. And so that is an important part of how I think about the role, is that will people be looking to this person both positively, with, you know, energy and I need help with getting this news out, I have great news. When we talk about all of the things you want to do, capital improvements, electric buses, these are all things that need the support of the district. When you guys get questioned about how you're spending money, if you can communicate those things well, that is, that is good, that's helpful because people will understand more about what you're all trying to accomplish. That's another benefit of these kinds of roles. Does that answer your question?
I think, yeah, thank you.
So Amy had suggested, I'm sorry, Heather had suggested potentially removing goals 2.5 and 2.6 to streamline the section. Amy shared that 2.6 is already in progress, essentially. 2.5 is a trailing item that goes after 2.4. And if we have, if we do have additional capacity in the communication space, I think these are all manageable. And maybe there are some additional suggestions to refine this section, but I think these are all manageable.
I think we'll learn as we go. I'm certainly still learning about how things work now. Every interview I have, I learn a lot. And so we'll find other opportunities there. But I think to Dan's point, things like figuring out how, a better way to support social media, again, there will be questions, does the district want to communicate on social media in a way that they're not currently doing so, is still an open question. But to address what is there now and how to make that a better supporter of the district is something that is a project that once set up should be easier to manage long-term. Back to your point about some of the, kind of the early push on these things.
And a lot of the complexity of this is the, starting from the blank page, like, oh, we have a new school district, how are we going to communicate? That's not our reality. Our reality is we are, we have many, many, many platforms of communication already established. How do we first understand what they are?
Yep.
How they function? And then look for ways to improve, merge, right? That's the complexity.
And then you have a whole community that will benefit from understanding where to find information. I think if we end up with a sort of a handbook for staff and a handbook for the community in some form, or maybe it's just a webpage, that says, hey, when you're looking for information about this, we got you, this is where you'll find it, every day, that's where it's going to be. If you're looking for this kind of information, this is where we'll be putting it. If you have a question about this, here's the person you're going to email, but give them a little more handholding. If you're still lost on Schoology, here's the video that is going to get you comfortable. So making sure wherever people are stuck in their communications and understanding how to engage with the district, we've got that, too. That's part of what we're trying to move towards. So there's just a confidence coming from the community end that they know how to find things, they know what's going on, and they know when and how to engage with it.
I would suggest we, we leave them as is and move on to curriculum and see, you know, if, because I feel like we've spent a lot of time on these goals and we, perhaps we should just leave as is and, and continue on. It's just meant to be a guidepost, I guess, for us in terms of what our goals are for the year. So that would be my suggestion.
So I don't necessarily need to be gold, but it seems like it would be really good sometime around March, between the website launch and the best practices being done, to have another talk with the board, a status update or something, whether it's a workshop or just at a board meeting.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Other thoughts on communications before we move on? All right.
Thank you.
So the next theme, three, is curriculum instruction and competency-based learning and reporting. And again, where you see detailed dates here, I believe that these were primarily, mostly provided by the administration. So we know that the, the middle school reporting, progress reporting is changing now and will be implemented for the fall semester. So that first one is looking at those changes. 3.2 is looking at the transition.
Yes, between middle school and high school.
Middle school to high school. That timing of a report to the school board at the end of, by the end of March would not be early enough to intervene in anything that was, that was not going right. But it would be, you know, at that point, the, the incoming freshmen have, you know, the eighth graders that are going to be rising freshmen the next year will, will have gone through their course selection and they, and they're going to be headed towards, you know, that transition point at the end of the school year.
Yeah, I would just say for that one, the, the reporting, you know what, I just lost my place.
3.1 for the middle school?
No, 3.2, I'm sorry. The reporting is good for the parents, but the, one of the transition concerns was actually for the students to know how they're being graded. So is that, if that's wrapped up in that statement, then that's good. But if it's not, then it should be added or, or indicated.
Yeah, I think that was the focus for the conversation was how we're transitioning kids between eighth grade and their ninth grade year, going from the grading and reporting system in the middle school to the grading and reporting system in the high school.
Okay. So it's, but it's not, I don't want it to be just focused on the reporting.
Yes.
To the students. The students need to know how they're, you know, on a day-to-day basis, it may be too much, but.
I can work on that language to clarify.
Yeah.
3.3 says that for middle school and high school, we have competencies on the website by the end of 2022.
So how is that different than the competencies that are already on the website?
So some of the competencies have changed since, since then, so that document, those documents need to be updated.
And then 3.4 was to look at peer districts with regard to how they're using and communicating competencies in relationship to reporting.
To your point, Heather, should we just change "published" to "update, updated"? Does that work as well?
Yes.
Okay. Just, so we're not suggesting that it's not yet published?
And then section four is DEIJ. And really, what's proposed here is to work with Rachel to develop a more refined set of proposed metrics and goals in the first half of the year, and then in the second half of the year, do a workshop with the board, with the, with the DEIJ coordinator as to our progress and direction. So are we at a point where we would be, we're comfortable adopting these as they are right now with, with the change that Dan proposed? Or do we want to have?
And the typos fixed? The multiple typos of many? I know, I'm being persnickety.
Are we at the point where we want to accept them as they are with, with clerical corrections and, and the modification that Dan proposed for 3.3? Or we want to see additional updates to certain sections before we bring this back again? Adopt them as they are?
We can always amend them.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
All right, we have a motion? Brian?
Make a motion to adopt the Orchester River Cooperative School Board goals for 2022-23 as amended.
Second, for a second from Dan, further discussion? All those in favor? We have six in favor and the goals are adopted. Thank you very much. School Board Committee updates? Were there any other committee updates tonight? No? Public comment? Nobody here for closing public comment. We have our future meeting dates here, August 3rd and August 20th right here. There'll be a manifest meeting at the end of August. And, and don't forget that August 23rd is the grand opening for the middle school. So with that, I will move that we enter non-public session pursuant to New Hampshire RSA, Chapter 91-A, Section 3, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph I, which is consideration of matters relating to preparation for and carrying out of emergency functions. We have a second from Brian, and this requires a roll call vote.
Heather Smith, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
All right, thank you. We'll be in, that's six in favor, we'll be in non-public. We're going to go into the orchestra room for non-public. We're going to go into the orchestra room for non-public?